It's recording.
Okay. Okay, hello, everyone. Thank you for coming to our regular meeting of the Board of Education on April 6th, 2021. We'll start by calling the meeting to order 603. Our, the first order of business on our agenda is public comments. The Northwood Board of Education welcomes public comments and we ask that participants only limit their speech to five minutes or less and please know that although we may not directly, it's our policy to not directly respond to public comments. We will definitely be in touch afterwards if, you know, if there's anything that needs to be responded to or answered. We do have a member of the public today. So I would like to invite our member of the public to make a comment if, if she so chooses.
Just fitting in, I didn't have any specific comment today. You guys all rock. That's all.
That's a good comment. Let's just go with that one. Hey, you rock too. Okay, so then let's, we'll be looking at the minutes of from our last meeting, March 2nd. Did everyone get a copy of their, of their minutes in their board packet?
Yes. I did not. I, maybe in my mailbox. I'm sorry. It's been a crazy week and I haven't checked my mailbox.
That's okay.
So I don't have my minutes, so I'll abstain from voting on them.
Okay. Well, let's see.
I will motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we have one abstention. But the motion does carry. Okay. Next is correspondence. I don't have any correspondence that I wanted to share. Mary Beth, is there anything that you wanted to share?
I haven't received any correspondence either, Anne.
Okay. Then we, we can move right along to the superintendent's report. And did you, well, we have some, we have some bills in our packet. If anyone's like, everybody has any questions about those. I'm sure that we'd be happy to review them.
Sure, why don't we start there?
Sorry, someone just pulled into my house.
No questions or are you thinking about it? I don't want to keep you hanging here, but I want to. Okay.
I think there's no questions if you'd like to move on.
Okay, a couple of questions I have for you. So we have a lot of lighting and staging equipment in the workroom. It was purchased with a grant that I believe John secured for us last year. And I'm just not sure, you know, if there's a plan for that or where we want to store that. Does anybody, and John's not here, so we may not be able to answer that question tonight, but does anybody here have any idea what the plan is for that or what the time?
Yeah, I do. I think I have, I think I have a, a pretty solid idea of the plan. So the idea was, of course, to keep bolstering our, our theater program at the school. Of course, the, you know, COVID hit the brakes on that pretty hard. But that said, I think that those things could be stored, you know, so that, for use on the stage. So whenever the, the, the PTO group can get back in to do some organization, you know, we'll try, what I would really love to do is to kind of define an area around the stage. Or if, if that doesn't seem secure or safe enough, then maybe we can move it into say the music room or someplace like that, so we can keep it safe. But what we were working to do was to, to bolster that theater area, you know, so it could be not only a great space for Botel, but also for the town, you know, it's, you know, we're, it's a big space that has a, that has a stage, so it's kind of a fantastic resource.
Well, there's no lack of places to store things here. We have more storage than we probably will ever use at some point. But we just wanted to make sure that people were aware that it's here and, you know, if there was some, some plan or place to put it, that we could certainly collaborate on that. But that's good to know. Thank you, Anne. The second thing I wanted to talk about, we, I think have had a conversation or two. I'm not sure it's been at the board level, but we want to put in, install some showcases in the Hall of Flags for our, you know, trophies and awards and make up an area where it's prominent, where the public can see it when they come into the building for hearings and such. And they're not in our budget for next year. But I'm thinking that, you know, this might be an opportunity for some of the resources in the community that have in the past offered to support Botel or would like to make a donation, or if there's someone that we can approach to say, you know, this is a project we would like, would you like to sponsor that? So if anyone has any ideas about how we can go about that. The person who built them, I think in the past, the ones that we have now is no longer, I understand, doing that. Not sure where we begin to look, but if anyone knows of a craftsman who would be willing to help make them and perhaps a foundation or agency willing to help sponsor the cost of it, that would be good to know.
I would love for our, our communications group, which hasn't, hasn't met, met much recently, which is, you know, likely my, my fault. But I would love for our communications group to maybe take that on, you know, because I, I feel like that's a a bit of PR there, how we can kind of bring the school to be relevant to the community. Use that space for a public space. And you figure out a way to fund it, you know, either, I think we could probably get some funding or, and you maybe put out a campaign with the PTO or something along those lines to be able to, to get that to happen. Because in addition to, I'm sure you all remember Sally showed us all those great historical pieces that she wants to donate to the school. There is that, there is that display case when you first enter the school there that has some historical pieces, but I would love to see those pieces moved to the Hall of Flags to a more kind of formal spot and let that, that display case be a more, I don't know, showcase for kids' work or, you know, school elementary style stuff. And I think it'd be great, as we talked about last time, to collaborate with the Historical Society if we can. So if anybody does know of a craftsman or somebody who you think would be a good option or a way to go to do that, please get in touch with me or Jill or Ginger as the Communications Committee and, and see if we can, you know, start maybe making that come together. Also, I don't want to say, I, I also don't want to like, forget about the trophy case piece of it too, because the trophy case that houses the kids' trophies, the, all of our great athletic trophies, there's just not enough space. We win like every soccer thing and we can't put it there. There's just no more space. So I would love to, you know, have the kids have a place where they can also be kind of memorialized that way.
That'd be great.
So thanks for bringing that up, Mary Beth, and please, uh, if anybody has anything else they want to, they can add to that, let me know.
Okay, okay. And then at some point, Anne, I know a bunch of us were down there and identified some of the wall space to hang some of the, the award panels. I just want to make sure that if we have, do we still have an awards committee? That's, that there's a, a, you know, consensus and agreement among everybody in terms of where those things are going to go. So we'll, we can follow up on that. Thank you. Couple other things I wanted to share with you. As we mentioned quite a while back, by this year, we were prepared to move our multi-age model to grades five and six. And given the fact that we had to close school down last spring and did not know what this year was going to bring, our focus was solely on getting us back to school safely and as much in person as possible. And we weren't going to try to implement the next stage of multi-age in these circumstances. But we're at a point now where we are, we are ready to move forward with that. So Lauren and I have some preliminary plans put in place. You know, we've had to downsize one of our teachers, our, our teaching staff. So we've been looking at certifications and experience and the best people to have here moving forward. So we will be down a teacher, but we will have our fifth and sixth grade teachers still here next year. And they will be collaborating in partnership. We will have two sessions of upper intermediate. It'll be a nice opportunity for us to separate some of the kids that have been together for many, many years. As Lauren will attest to, the springtime drama has begun. Primarily with our, our girls, but it can also escalate to include some of our, our male students. But moving ahead to next year, it'll be nice to have the opportunity to separate out some of these, these kids who again are behaving more like siblings because they've been together for so long. So as of next year, we will have one section of early primary, one section of primary, one section of the lower intermediate, and then two sections of our upper intermediate. We will be communicating, our teachers know, all the teachers know what their assignments are going to be. Total buy-in and a lot of excitement about it. And now that the board knows we're moving forward, we will begin to communicate with our families. And as we've always done, we will have an informational meeting available for parents before the end of this year. All of the children who will be in the multi-age upper intermediate have at some point been in that model. So it won't be a big surprise to anybody or in terms of what that model is, but we will reconnect because some of those students have been out of it for a year and we do have some new players, new, new families. So that is on the horizon. And then the other thing that I'm really excited about, Lauren has really pulled up a lot of good information for us to do this and done a lot of the, the groundwork. But we're going to be using our S R two funds to offer summer school to all of our students who have been identified as having some learning gaps. So primarily our kids who are in the SRBI process now will be invited to come and spend up to six weeks in summer school for math and/or reading language arts work. We have five teachers on board who are available to implement the instructional piece. Lauren is reaching out to families to see who in fact would be willing, you know, or is interested in coming. We will offer a remote option if there are families that can't provide transportation because we don't have enough money in this S R two, S R two money, which amounts to about $11,000. So we don't have enough money for a bus or anything, but we will offer a remote option to any of these students who can't get brought to or picked up. And as soon as we know who the students are that are going to participate, we will match up teachers. We have both primary and intermediate teachers, so we'll be able to pair primary teachers with primary students, intermediate teachers with intermediate students. We're looking at no more than a one to two ratio in terms of teacher-student, you know, groups. So we'll be able to offer really closely targeted instruction to meet student needs. These teachers will have the SRBI interventions and current academic data to help guide instruction. And we're, we're thinking that this is going to be a very wonderful way, not only to, you know, continue the growth that these students have been making, but also to mitigate any summer learning loss that typically happens. So that's what we're doing with our S R funds. We have not yet gotten any guidance on what we can do with our rescue funds, which come to about $24,000, but that will be additional money. And again, we don't know what the limitations are, what the conditions are. For instance, the S R two money had four different categories. One that we chose was priority one, student learning. The other categories included things like ventilation systems or bigger projects, but we didn't have enough money to really consider any of that. And it's really nothing on, on the, you know, radar right now that would, we would consider anyway. So that is about all I have to share with you. Any questions about any of that?
Ginger?
Yeah. I still, I know we were on like, what year, like five of the multi-age classrooms? And I still get confused on the names. So can you just, Claire, because you mentioned early primary, primary, then intermediate and upper intermediate?
So our early primary would be what was pre-K K.
Okay.
Primary would be what was one and two. Intermediate would be three and four. Upper intermediate would be five and six. And as you said, we're like into year four or five. So we're really trying hard to get away from third and fourth graders, first and second graders. So we don't be really hammering home those, those labels. And by this time next year, we'll all be really comfortable with them, I hope.
Right. So, okay. So my question is, because I know this year, because of COVID too, early primary was split so that the pre-kers were not in the same. I'm sorry about the screaming. The kids are playing, which is good. But the kids weren't, the pre-kers were not in the same cohort as the kindergartners. So next year, will they be combined again?
They will.
And are they still part-time?
Yes, they'll still be the three and a half days. Correct.
Okay, so then that's one class. Then there's one section of primary.
Yes.
Then there's two sections of intermediate and two sections of upper intermediate.
No, one section of intermediate, that's the place where we have reduced our teaching staff. We have two sections this year. It'll go to one section. So we had one section of primary, those kids that are moving up, the numbers are small enough that we only need one section of intermediate. But we still have about 20 kids who would be in the fifth, sixth grade. Actually, it works out well with multi-age because we'll have about two groups of 10 instead of a group of, it would be off balance. But we, the number still warrant having two sections. After that year, chances are that we will be down another teacher. And probably by the school year 2000, you know, 23, 24, we will have no more than four classroom teachers. Unless enrollment somehow takes a miraculous turn.
Okay, so we'll have five classroom teachers next year.
Yes.
Will we still have support from math and curriculum and reading?
Yes, we will. And I think we will always maintain those people because while the numbers, you know, will justify one class, we just want to make sure a, anytime those kids in those classrooms are supported. So we have no intention of looking to eliminate the math or the reading, we, our language arts resource people.
Okay. No, thank you for the clarification. I just want to make sure, you know, especially if anyone asks us like, what's going on? And I know what I'm talking about. I'm not going.
And you, you, you may get questions once we start to communicate this out. So thank you for, for asking those questions.
Okay, thank you, Mary Beth.
Along those lines, I think it's important to talk about what the teacher assignments will be. You know, is that, is that something we can, we can discuss that? And there's no reason why that can't be discussed in public, right? I mean, they can.
No. No, not at all. So let me share with you that Debbie Talon, who was our primary person, our kindergarten teacher for years, will be the primary, early primary teacher. Erica is going to move down to Debbie's spot and take the early, the primary classroom. Jessica will remain where she is in the intermediate classroom. And then Chris and Melissa will be working together to implement two sections of upper intermediate.
Now, with the upper intermediate piece, will it be working that they will still switch classes sometimes where like the, there's like a specialty of math in one place and a specialty of social studies or history in another, that sort of thing?
Well, given our math curriculum, they have to be separated out for math still. So one of the teachers will teach math. One of the teachers, and you know, the other teacher to one grade, the other teacher will teach the, the opposite grade. So the fifth and, the sixth graders will all be together for math and the fifth grade age group would all be together for math as well. They would be, I'm not sure what other opportunities they would be switching classes for. The majority of the time, they would be with their cohort. And there may be opportunities where both, because it's still a group, combined group of 20, that they may opt to do some things together. But they will be a cohort as we have in all of the other multi-age classrooms.
And while there are still two teachers in the upper intermediate, the plan for next year is to continue to have Mrs. Aslan teach science and continue to have Mr. Snyder teach social studies. And they'll have, you know, they'll follow a, you know, a two-year curriculum cycle with those students. So all of the, the fifth grade concepts are, fifth and sixth grade concepts are addressed. Just on a spiraling every other year curriculum like we're doing in the other grade levels.
Thank you, Lauren. Right. So the, the students would still be in a cohort, but they, they would have a different teacher for science and social studies. So they'll get a flavor of what that's like to have different teachers. For sure.
Yeah. I, I like that piece of the multi-age. Um, I, I feel like that, that helps people get ready for their switching classes and regional. I think that's useful.
Although, again, just, you know, down the road, not too far down the road, there won't be any opportunity to switch because we will soon be going to just one section of even the upper intermediate. Right?
Yeah, I think that that's something, um, we really need to start focusing on. I mean, I don't know, our, our Board of Ed, we, we took a lot of, we took these steps towards multi-age to manage this time period as we were shrinking. And I think that that has been a really good, very forward-thinking step. I think we have to really start thinking hard about our five-year plan, because if our five-year plan includes, you know, under 50 students, that's, that's going to be hard to maintain in our large building. So I mean, obviously, you know, I just, I just want us to start kind of putting that on our radar for something that, no, we need to start kind of building a response to. As we set our board goals for next year, I think that needs to play really big in, in, in our board goals, that conversation, how to be engaging people. Now, we started last year, um, right at the beginning, when I, when I started being the, the, when I took on the chairmanship, we, we went and met with the Culver folks and, you know, COVID just, just threw so many things off balance. But I think now that we're starting to get handle on things again, that I would really like to start those conversations again and see if there's, you know, some way for us to keep making sure that we have good, rich experiences for our kids. So.
Well, and you know, to, to underscore that, Anne, next year, we anticipate having seven students in the kindergarten portion of early primary and two new preschoolers coming in for a total of nine students in that multi-age class. The following year, those eight kindergarten age kids will move on, leaving two preschoolers for kindergarten and then however many preschoolers come in. And if it's two or three like we have coming in this next year, we're looking at a, a combined class of maybe four or five students. And then that number is going to very quickly go up, you know, up the ladder. So the number is going to shrink, you know, really quickly because all of the larger enough for classrooms are going to be moving on and the classes coming in are, are quite small. And again, I think that, you know, it's really important for the board, as you said, to start having conversations about that. And I would think that we have to include other people in those conversations because the board will not have the ability to do it by themselves in terms of, you know, if we're considering consolidation or some other plan, we're going to need other people part of that, being part of that conversation.
Yeah. And no matter how great we make our school, if there aren't any kids who live in our town, it doesn't matter. You know, I mean, it, it matters. Of course it matters. But I mean, it doesn't bring more children. What, to that end, something I wanted to mention, uh, and I know Lauren was there last night at the PTO meeting last night. Jenna talked about running into Kate Johnson, of course, former chairman of the Board of Ed actually, who has been working, you know, is one of the people working on bringing in some more affordable housing into town. And she mentioned that it would be really helpful if there were voices at the Planning and Zoning Committee meetings or board meetings to, just to put out there, like, you know, why, why is it that, or what do we know about the people, about the, the families who are not coming back to Botel? Or like, what it, you know, you know how we've been doing those exit surveys forever now, or, you know, for the last several years, trying to figure out, well, you know, what is the reason for our declining population? Like, you know, to try to pinpoint that and to study that exactly. I think it'd be really helpful for us as board members to attend some of those and talk about what we've found. You know, our exit surveys to tell us and, you know, how having places to live is really fundamental to, you know, what is a challenge for our, for our families to, to be here and to be supplying kids to our school. So. Anyway, I will, um, keep you posted on those, on those meetings. Um, I, I think she said it was the May meeting where they're going to be really focusing on that. So that's one I'd really love to see our, our Board of Ed members try to attend.
And do you have a date in May for that, Anne?
I don't know it yet. I wonder if I could find it actually. It may be on the town website. I don't have it on the top of my head.
That's okay.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I just spoke with Mike Halloran from Planning and Zoting today. He was at my house. And they're anticipating having like a tent outside town hall to have meetings in person, because I,
Oh.
So we may be able to actually attend in person as well. Just to throw that out there. I don't know exactly when they're going to start doing that.
Upcoming meetings. Okay, it's, um.
Someone can make sure I know what the date and time is. I will put it on my calendar.
It's May 11th at 6:30.
Okay.
That's the May meeting. There is a meeting in April, but, um, what I understood from Jenna's conversation with Kate, that the May meeting is the one where they'll be talking about this. They're, they're, um, it's like an environmental housing project. It's kind of, it's kind of a wonderful thing, all wrapped up together, but. Okay. Great. So, uh, and then in regard to the summer program, I did have a couple of questions actually. Yeah. So that's an opt-in. Like, how does that work exactly? The kids are invited to?
We're, we're inviting the students who have been identified with serious learning gaps, who are currently receiving interventions in school. So, and it, it comes out to about 17% of our student population. So, we just want, we don't have many teachers who are able to, you know, work through the summer of the, you know, five teachers, they can't work all six weeks. So we just don't want to be inundated. We want to be able to provide really intense targeted instruction to those who are most needy. So at this point, any student who is identified and receiving SRBI interventions and support from reading and/or math, it, that's the audience that we want to target. So we're going to do everything we can to get them engaged this summer and keep them in the learning cycle.
Okay. And those are, those are in-person classes that can, that will also be offered virtually if, if necessary, something like that. Is that what you said?
We're, we're stressing the in-person. We have one or two families that are saying we, we may not be able to get transportation. And they're kids that we really want to keep engaged. So for those families that really, you know, have to, i- if it's no other option, we'll, we will accommodate them remotely. But our hope is that we will have the majority of kids in person at Botel.
Okay. For the transportation issue, I've known, I've heard a few times, like, people make suggestions over, like, ways to handle transportation issues. So I wonder if there is a transportation issue, if you can let me know about it, maybe there's some way that we can help with that or find some help if that's allowed. But I, um, we, we can see how that goes as the, as it, as the time passes. And those are offered without, there's no fee or anything for that program, right?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. And the, and the people who are invited are, are asked directly for it. So it doesn't need some extra explanation or anything?
No, no. Lauren has been in contacting those parents and having conversations and working directly with the parents.
Okay. And what are the, what's the timeframe for it?
So the sessions go between June 21st and August 5th. There are three two-week sessions. And the sessions run Monday through Thursday. So there, you know, four days a week. And they will be three hours in length. So a student might only come for, you know, an hour of language arts and an hour of math. Or, you know, um, they might come for two hours for math and, and English language arts. Depending on what their needs are, we will have a, an individualized plan for them. But the, the sessions will, will be limited to three hours total each day.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Does anybody? Okay, okay, thanks. Does anybody else have any questions about that? Okay, was there anything else that you wanted to talk about, Mary Beth?
That's all I have. Unless people have questions, I'm good.
Okay, um, I think we're ready to move on to the principal's report. Thank you, Mary Beth.
You're welcome. A lot has been happening at Botel, thankfully, through March. And our kids have really been the beneficiaries of some fun programming sponsored by the PTO with Spirit Week. We've had Read Across America Week. Um, Mr. Snyder annually promotes the March Madness Tournament of Books. Uh, our students are engaged in the Dream Box, which is a math, online math program, the Dream Box Challenge. So our kids have been really busy and engaged with lots of fun school spirit things and, um, you know, learning opportunities. So uh, that's been fantastic. Um, some upcoming events. We're planning a Botel version of the Geography Bee that we typically participate in each year. We're planning a Ruler parent presentation the week of the tenth. And I believe we chose the date of May eleventh. Now, maybe we might want to consider rescheduling that, given that there's the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting. Because we want to make sure we pick a day where most of our parents can attend and hear about what their children are learning with Ruler, how parents can implement Ruler at home. And we're going to put together, because it will be virtual, we're going to put together, you know, a lot of um, videos, interviews with kids, examples of student work. So parents can really get a feel about what their children are doing and how they're learning. And, and see ways that they can connect the work of Ruler with their families at home. Uh, we're making progress on the sixth grade trip. Um, and I also want to mention a really cool collaboration that's come to our attention. So Kelly Condra Hughes reached out to me to let me know about um, some work that she was um, engaging in with the Salisbury School and the Norfolk Historical Society around James Mars, who Sally actually mentioned at the last meeting. So I've been in contact with the history teacher who has really turned this project over to his students. And they're, you know, uh, presenting their research and findings about James Mars to various groups um, around the Northwest Corner. So uh, we wanted to get our kids involved in that. So we're still in the process of determining what that program is going to look like. And basically, the Salisbury students are going to teach our fifth and sixth graders about James Mars. He lived a fascinating life in Norfolk. He was the last slave um, in Norfolk. And then I believe became a deacon of um, a church in town. They're having a ceremony for him on May first, and we're going to publicize this with our families. But the goal is, is that the Salisbury students will teach our students what they know about James Mars. So then, on the first of May, when they have this ceremony, which our state senators are coming to, the N C double A, the N C double A, the N?
Double A.
Yes, thank you. Um, and too much March Madness for myself. Uh, it's going to be very well attended. They're putting in a witness stone to honor James Mars. And there's going to be, you know, quite an event um, to celebrate his life. So I would really like our upper intermediate students to know about, you know, who he was on History Day every year. When Mr. Snyder brings them around Norfolk, they visit the historical, you know, one of the historical cemeteries in Norfolk. And they see his, you know, gravestone. I don't think that they learn much more about him. And right now, there isn't anything in our curriculum about him. But I feel like this is a really good step um, to bring that to fruition. So I just was excited to share that with you and to let you know about that upcoming date of May first. Um, that's all I have for you. If you have any other questions about my report, feel free to ask.
That's great. That sounds really interesting. So will the, will the Salisbury students come to Botel?
I, I think we're thinking, well, we originally were like, maybe they can come outside and be part of History Day when they visit the cemetery. But then um, Mr. Snyder really wanted the kids to know about it prior to History Day. So they could, in fact, attend on the first. So we are thinking it probably will be a Zoom um, presentation. Maybe with a follow-up when they go on History Day in person. So those details are still being worked out. The Salisbury teacher really wants to put it on the kids. Like, how, you know, it's obviously different presenting to a group of adults about someone in history than it is helping younger children learn about it. So he really wants to empower his students to think about what might this look like for our students. So I'm really excited about that.
The, the ceremony on May first, where is that?
I believe it's at the Town Green.
Oh, okay. The Norfolk Town Green? I'm sorry. Okay, Norfolk Town Green.
And like I said, we plan on publicizing it to the whole school community, but I just figured I would mention it to you all uh, this evening.
Great, thanks. Okay, thank you very much, Lauren. Does anyone have any questions for Lauren? Okay, so thank you. We'll move on to our standing committees. Um, let's see, of our committees that met. Although the Finance Committee has not met, I did want to mention a, a little change to our budget. We have heard from the, I know John and Gordon aren't here. So I, I figured I'd, I'd help with this piece. And Jill, please feel free to help me out and also Mary Beth. We heard from the Board of Finance and the Selectmen, they, they let us know that we do not need to fund the um, catch-up. The, I don't know what to call it exactly, the.
Non-certified retirement catch-up, yeah.
Yeah, so we don't have to, we don't have to fund that line this year. So we were able to take that out of our budget. So that's fantastic news. It allowed us to uh, add a, a small amount to our um, budget. I mean, our, our building budget line to allow us to get the paging system that we had on our, our wish list and still stay significantly under um, what we had already given to the Board of Finance. So um, we talked to the Board of Finance uh, about this and, and let them know, like, what the thought process was and, and why we wanted that paging system. The paging system will um, bolster the security in the school and help with our communication throughout the school. It replaces a system that, you know, is older and, and has been failing for some time. So I think that that's um, really great news. So it's a, it's a slight adjustment to our budget. Is that something we need to vote on, Mary Beth?
Yeah.
Okay, um, did we get a copy of the revised budget?
Yep, it was in your packet.
It's in our packet. And so the changes are to those two lines that I mentioned. And in the final number that we end up with, um, brings us with a minus point seven one percent increase or a decrease of point seven one percent um, for a proposed budget of two million four twenty-two six ten, down about a little over seventeen thousand dollars from last year. So I, I feel good about this budget. I feel like we're doing, like, gay us. You know, I think we've got, we've put together something that's really um, supporting our, our school well and our students well and our staff. Um, and, and also being real conscious of our town and our circumstances. So um, with no further ado, um, I'd, I'd love someone to make a motion that we accept this revised budget. Okay, that motion's made by Jill?
A second.
And seconded by Donna. Is there any discussions? Anybody have any questions? Okay, all those in favor, just raise your hand. Okay, so that motion passes and we'll put that um, back to the Board of Finance. Thank you very much. Maybe that was a very good budget season. Um, also, uh, we also did talk a bit with the, it's kind of skipping ahead a little bit to the Board of Finance liaison piece, I guess. But um, as you know, Gordon wasn't able to come tonight, so uh, maybe I can help a little bit there, too. We talked about setting up that uh, the account, the non-lapsing account to uh, that enables us to, any money that we don't spend in our budget typically gets sent back to the, the town. We can't hold over money. However, the town can hold over um, a certain percentage of any money that we give back in a special account that can, gonna be held for us to be able to put um, towards our, you know, any needs we might have in the future. So uh, Mike talked specifically about uh, you know, going forward and setting that up, setting up that non-lapsing account. As I understand it, you can put up to two percent of your budget into that account. And it doesn't have to be the whole two percent. In fact, this year, it's likely that they'll put about one percent in. We gave quite a bit of money back at the end of, or we will probably be giving money back at the end of this school year. You know, there's still a few months left, but we're, we're tracking well. So we feel like we'll be able to uh, return some money. So thank you um, very much to our administration for being so conscientious in your um, spending of the, of the money and, and always looking for ways to, you know, offset costs. I appreciate that.
Well, and for this year, I believe the Board of Finance did approve a one percent uh, amount to go into that non-lapsing account, which would be about twenty-four thousand dollars. So that's a starting point. Any money that goes back this year, I would think they would vote again to add to that fund. So um, it's really great that, that we have the, the means to, to set some money aside in, at least this way, so that we have a fund for future unanticipated expenses or some of the larger projects. It's, it really has been a great budget season. And, you know, Mike has expressed uh, a great deal of satisfaction and, and pleasure in the process this year, which, you know, to your credit, as a board, that relationship has really, there's been a, a bridge built back to Board of Finance. So um, thank you all of you for helping to make that happen.
But now there's a motorcycle driving by, in case you're wondering why Maggie's upset. Anyway, welcome to the sounds of the Deserbro household. Okay, thank you. Um, moving on to policy. Um, Jill, I understand that you may want to talk about some policy stuff.
Yes, yes, as a matter of fact, I do. Um, we did not um, meet earlier today because we, Sally and John were unavailable. But I did speak with Mary Beth and the homework policy that Lauren had sent out to us last week, I believe it was, um, we, I would like to move forward um, with that at this meeting as the first reading and then um, discuss it and vote on it at the May meeting. Um, it wasn't, it wasn't included in the packet, but it is, um, we did all get it in an email. But I don't remember the date. I'm sorry, I meant to look that up, but I don't have that date. Um, on the, so that would be the homework policy, revised homework policy. And then, um.
I'm sorry, Jill, did everybody on the board get a copy of that? Or did it just go to the Policy Committee?
Oh, I did not send it to everyone, but I can do that right now. Okay.
Because we can't have a first reading if they have nothing.
Oh, yes, sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, yes, it was just to the policy groups.
Okay, great. So Lauren, you'll send us a copy of that so that we can, we can read it. And uh, we can bring any questions or changes or revisions to our next meeting.
The, the May meeting, right.
The May meeting. And at that May meeting, it'll be our, the second time we'll see it. So then we'll be able to vote on it then. It will be nice to put that one to bed. I feel like we've been talking about that homework policy for a long. Okay, um, and then uh, oh, that's, that's later under New Business. Okay, was there anything else um, under policy that you wanted to discuss, Jill?
Um, I have just one other um, note to mention. Mary Beth and I talked earlier today. And uh, at last month's meeting, I believe it was, when we talked about um, the staff member who we were going to extend um, the Culver Price tuition to have her child attend school, even though they don't live in town. Um, and Mary Beth, jump in at any point in time if I've, if I've not explaining this correctly. But um, we should, and I had, we should um, look to get a policy in place for that um, type of situation for staff members. And I, as I mentioned to Mary Beth, I believe um, I have a copy of uh, Language from uh, what Cornwall does. So I, I'm going to be sending that to her. I'm just giving you a heads up that in Met, you know, we'll be looking at that to put a policy place for that. Um, probably by the end of this year as well. How'd, how'd they do?
You did great. Uh, we do have a policy, and I think it's going to be a matter of tweaking it, making a small revision. And perhaps, Jill, since we couldn't have policy meeting with the whole group tonight, it's been quite a while. We might be able to come up with another date in May so we can meet as a, a committee prior to the board meeting. And um, make sure that we've got, you know, a presentation, a proposal that we all feel comfortable with. Okay, and we can, if you can send out that um, the policy that you have ahead of time, too, I'd love to read through that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, great. Um, all right, so um, I did hear from Gordon regarding the um, shared, shared services. As her shared services liaison, that everything was moving forward um, and, and going smoothly. Uh, although there was some, they were concerned about money issues, but that everything seemed to be all right. From the PTO, the PTO did meet last night. The, the thing I wanted to share from that is that uh, we have decided that it's not yet really the right time to bring the theater production back for uh, this year. We're going to be looking towards next year for the school theater production. Um, although we may be supporting a production over the summer, if, if things seem like they're going to work out that way. The PTO might help to fund that. But um, we are going to be moving forward with a talent show. We're going to push it towards the end of the year as far as we can go, um, looking at that first weekend in June. And uh, we're going to hold it outside. So I, I think it'll be a really fun event. It's going to be, it's going to be a little different than it has been in the past, you know, maybe more of uh, an open mic kind of thing. Where just a little less uh, kind of closeness and structure and a little more kind of free-flowing, but still uh, with lots of opportunity for expression and performance and, and artistic appreciation. So I think that'll be great. And we've, we've already got some community members. John Barbigallo and John DeChazo are our favorite uh, theater production team who've agreed to help us figure out a way to make it all, all work. Um, also, um, there is, the, the garden brick fundraiser is ongoing now. There is a, there's a website where um, bricks can be purchased and customized for, you know, for inclusion in, in our expanded patio. And I know Jenna's, Jenna's not here anymore, but I know she is very excited to get started on that, on those projects again for the garden as, as things are, as the days are getting a little brighter and longer. I think that's all from the PTO. Oh, the PTO is also going to be um, supporting teacher appreciation. Oh, the PTO is also going to be supporting Teacher Appreciation Day as, as we always do. This year, we're, we're thinking that it makes the most sense to support a catered lunch or something along those lines. But kind of plans are still in process for that. Okay, um, then moving on. I think we're ready to move towards to new business. And we need to take a look at the healthy food certification. Everyone should have received that in their packet. We, we, uh, we get this every year, I think, right? It feels like every year, maybe it's every two years. Is it every year, Kathy? Um, and we need to vote to accept it each, each year. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the healthy food certification?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a motion made by Donna. And then we need a second. A second by Jill. Is there any discussion? Okay, um, how about a, a vote? All those in favor?
I haven't seen it, so I feel like I have to abstain, but does that?
Kathy, do we need this language read into the me, meeting or is it, we do? So
Okay, well, I can read it. I love to read. I can put my performance voice on. Oh, we don't need to read it. Well, I'll read it for, I'll read it for Ginger's benefit.
I know I read it last year, I read, but I just, I don't wanna say that I vote for it when I don't have my packet and
It's exactly the same. There, there's no changes to it, just so you know.
If it's the same, I approved it last year. I have no objections.
You don't want me to read it? Just kidding. Okay, so then, uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, um, then we also, on the same piece of paper, have to vote for the, the food and beverage exemption piece. Um, and that motion, and I'm gonna ask this time, just gonna read it, is the Board of Education or governing authority will allow the sale of students, the, the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards and beverages not listed in the section 10 dash 22, 1Q of the Connecticut general statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at a location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice meeting or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer game school plays and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held. So what I get from that is like, you can sell events at like, like the PTO can sell, can sell food and beverages after school, like at special things. So would anyone like to make a motion that we approve the combined food and beverage exemptions?
I will.
Okay, and a second? Okay, and all those in favor? Okay, that motion carries. Okay, we've adopted the revised budget. And then on new business, we also have listed the sixth grade class trip. Does someone wanna tell us a bit about that? Maybe Lauren?
Sure. I'm just warning my family. I have to talk now, so the noise at the Valentino household. So I just wanna thank Ginger and the sixth grade parents for all of their flexibility. Cause as you can imagine, planning an overnight field trip somewhere for our sixth graders has been a bit of a challenge in the middle of a pandemic, but we're persevering. And I think that we have a really wonderful trip planned for them. We ran into a snafu with bus transportation. And I believe this is on the agenda because we were going to appeal to the board for permission for parents to drive, which still may be necessary. Our bus company does not have any extra bus drivers and are concerned that if something were to happen, traffic, the, you know, bus breaks down, they wouldn't be able to complete the Norfolk Regional and Botel runs. So they were very sad to not be able to help us with the field trip. But then we reached out to the Leggett Bus Company in Barkhamsted to see if they were perhaps available. After throwing around renting a commercial van and, you know, parents ultimately driving. The Leggett Bus Company did confirm that they would be able to provide us with transportation on the dates we requested, which are the last Thursday and Friday in May. I am awaiting a quote from them to, you know, see if it is in fact affordable. But we are penciled in for Project Oceanology, which is a program that's run on the Yukon Avery Point campus with many onshore, in the lab and on boat experiences for our students that really match our sixth grade science curriculum. And they have a hostel on site where they have dormitory style accommodations. We may have to bring food, which for our 11 students will not be a hardship. And um, you know, we're really looking forward to this opportunity for our sixth graders. So they have something memorable and special to end their Botel experience with. So all is going well. Do you have any questions for me about the sixth grade trip? And I guess my question would be if we are unable to obtain bus transportation, is there, are, are there objections from the board to parents providing transportation on the field trip?
I just need to interject here that it, it, there's a liability to consider. I, I, I'm, any drivers would really need to be sure that their personal insurance covered them for because I know people know each other here, you're friends, you don't anticipate anything happening. But if there were to be an accident or, you know, God forbid, something happened in, in transit, I, I would not want, you know, it, it is a school sponsored, if it, if it's a school sponsored activity, then the school and the board would be held in liability. We may wanna consider just calling this a sixth grade trip that is planned and sponsored by the sixth grade families, in which case we would grant excused absences to the students. But it wouldn't be a school sponsored trip. But then I don't want the parents who are volunteering to feel like they're left out on a limb by themselves. So I, I think it does bear a little bit of discussion and I just wanna make sure everyone is aware of some potential risk to either individual parents or to the board in the sad event that something, you know, happened on the way to or from the, the field trip.
Well, my concern with saying that it's not school sponsored, but yet having the teachers and principal on that trip, then that's also sort of there's, there's a lack of connection there. I don't, I can't think of what the word is, disconnect.
Yeah. And I agree, Ginger. I just don't know of any other way that we could, you know, not have the board held liable, but you're absolutely right.
Well, which is why I, I did look at renting like vans, because then under that rental insurance, we could make sure that everything was covered instead of being under personal insurance of the parent. So I am hoping that the, you know, the Barkhamsted busing company can take the kids, cause that would definitely alleviate a lot. And also just time for parents as well. But we are willing, there's four of us that have said we will make sure that the kids get there if necessary. So we will definitely, you know, refer to the board for whatever you guys, you know, we, we decide as a board. But, and I wanna thank Lauren for all her hard work of getting all this done, cause it cannot be easy right now to do this.
What is the timing of the trip? Like, um, is there enough time? Like if it doesn't work out with the Barkhamsted bus or like, do you know when you'll have an answer for the bar, from the Barkhamsted bus? Like for, is there enough time for you to come back to the board to talk to us or does it have to be a decision that has to be made before our next meeting?
No, cause it's the end of May and our next board meeting is in beginning of May. Right, Lauren? I'm not to answer for you or Mary Beth.
Yes. I, I, you know, I spoke with, um, you know, one of the owners of the bus company who assured me that they could take our students. I've sent a couple of emails to another member of the bus company that she directed me to contact and I have yet to hear from him. We have used Leggett Bus Company in the past for the sixth grade trip. So yeah, I can't imagine that the quote is going to be something that's exorbitant. And they have said that they can take us on those days. So I'm quite hopeful that that is going to all work out. And I can certainly reach out again before April break to, um, you know, speak with somebody directly if my emails are not responded to. But no, I think we have time to, you know, wait and see what happens with that before, you know, sharing this with you again. We don't need to have an answer tonight.
Okay, all right. Well, so thank you for the update and for, for all the work to make that, you know, to make it a, a special time. Is there anything that the sixth grade needs from the board for, like to help support the promotion efforts this year? Is there anything that, I don't know, I think we could do to help? Or will it be, will the promotion ceremony be held in the school as it has in the past?
Yeah, okay.
So
So as Lauren and I have spoken, and it will be Monday, June 14th at 6:00 PM in, in Botel. We have not decide, like Lauren and has not really decided yet on if there's any caps for attendance, but with 11 children. Not really, or how many we might need to cap that at if we wanna say like four people, just so we can, you know, I don't think on a Monday night, we're gonna have families of 10 coming to promotion. So, um, and right now that's what it's at. So I don't know, like cost wise, if there's anything that needs to be purchased, that has to be done. We're still doing fundraising for the sixth grade. We're chugging along. If anybody has, if anyone from the public's listening, cans and bottles, clean returnables, you can drop off at the transfer station. We've gotten a couple hundred bucks already, just some Yeah, we, there were some people who must have not through all of COVID given, like sent, brought back any of their bottles and cans. We've had like SUVs full of
Oh, my gosh.
I haven't been doing, I just get the pictures of what it looks like. And I'm gonna do the custom ink one again, I think by the end of this week. And Lisa Bizano's wrapping up getting the raffle baskets ready for the raffle. So there is no, you know, pasta dinner. We needed, you know, there's too much going on with a lot of other things. Though some things aren't happening this year, but uh, you know, thanks to Lauren finding a very affordable trip. We don't have to raise too much money. So we'll get it done.
Great, okay. Well, thanks Ginger and thanks to all those helping to make that year special. Okay, well, so I think that that's the end of our agenda. So I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'll do that. I'm, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, and a second? Okay.
Nobody wants to go home tonight either.
Or we could just hang, talk. It looks like both Donna and Jill seconded, so whoever you wanna write down, Kathy, and then the rest of us can say, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a nice night.
You too. Thank you.